Five fifteen, two thousand and nineteen, regular session. Your motion to accept?
I move to accept the minutes from the meeting of fifteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Second? There's a motion and a second to accept the minutes of five fifteen, two thousand and nineteen. Is there any discussion? No, all in favor, signal five, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Same sign. Motion carried. Citizens input. Start here. Anybody? State your name, please.
John.
Yes, you.
Me?
Yeah.
All right, Caroline Ned, I would like to thank the board on behalf of the library and the friends of the library for submitting two hundred and fifty dollars for our summer reading program.
Very well. Jane Hall.
I was gonna thank you for the same. But also, I handed out some working papers for you on the TGIF artist, which is to, our first event should be on a week from tomorrow. No, March first. I've been off a little bit. Anyway, June fourteenth, let's go with that. There are two things that I need to ask of the council that I don't happen to have. And one would be barricades for Smith Street and someone probably to help me at deciding where. We don't want traffic, we don't want car traffic except for vendors to be able to get in, unload, and get out. And so, you may have a better idea of where this should happen. I'm thinking, right, where the library parking spot is there on the north side of the library, because we have a house behind there that they're going to need to get to their parking area. And then barricade across. And we'll have to have someone there to allow vendors to come on in and to exit, to kind of police that, so we don't get through vehicle traffic through there. And then the east side of Smith. I had looked at Julia's, well, at that Smith Street. American is going to donate the use of a facility for us, and I'm thinking we'll put it. And I don't have the dimension on it yet. That they, Val wasn't sure, she was gonna try to get back with them. But it could either sit lengthwise there or crosswise. But I don't know, we probably need a barricade on east of whatever that unit is to make sure we don't get people driving down in there. But the people who live in that little house, it appears that behind the block building beside the house, there are a couple of parking areas, and it looks like maybe they have driven there, but I never-
There's only, there's a couple that lives upstairs, there's nobody in the bottom.
No, that, that house, the house.
Yeah, the brick house?
No, not the brick house, the one that's used to be no gas.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there is someone living there, but I never happened to see him. For me to go over and talk to him, because I don't think they want to spring it on them. They need to know what we're doing and make certain they can live at their house. And then, I don't know how we keep, I don't know what time Jamie's planning on setting up electric for sure, but I would say by five o'clock, we need all of the tra- traffic that might, or vehicles parked downtown, they need to be gone. So, do, is there, and if there's somebody there, I'm not gonna be able to probably find the people or track them down, and I don't, won't know who they belong to. Is there any signage that can be put out that there's no parking after?
Saying was it brought from break?
Yeah, and I think, and I'm not sure who to see to get that done either. So, those are two things that are a little bit out of my purview. I don't have the barricades hanging out on the other end.
Well, since I'm helping her, and I told her I'd help her, I'll, I'm gonna, I already planned that whole Friday to be there. So, I'll take care of coming down here and getting the signs and stuff and seeing them get up there. And we'll get the barricades. Like she said, on Smith, we just don't want nobody driving down Smith Street toward Mayfair at all. And then we'll make sure there by that little house, then people can get out on the other side. But I'm gonna be working all day, so I'll get with Jamie and we'll, we'll get everything pretty much taken care of. But I'm gonna help him with electrical part two, getting all that hooked up. And then probably Joey Stone will come and do the water, get all that done. Then, after the thing, I'll have to maybe recruit some help, but I'm gonna have to kind of take care of getting all the stuff put away.
You can have a bunch of us there.
Well, okay, yeah, as many, many Dylan will be there, and be some others, so we'll have plenty.
Well, I know, but I mean, I have to, I mean, I need permission from the board to get that done.
He just gave it to you, so.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't know if this is something needed board vote, 'cause I was trying to hunt that on the police. I wasn't sure whether I needed the police or whoever.
Am I counting, there's, there's thirty-eight?
Well, that's counting American.
Yeah.
Yes, and I probably have room. I think what we're gonna find is that people have verbally said, oh, I'm coming, but they never filled out an application.
Right.
And I'm, we're afraid people are gonna show up thinking. And these people are the people we have applications from. So, I think we're gonna have-
Are you guys aware of the fire trucks being down there then?
Yes.
So, that's already taken care of?
I think, yeah.
Can we get tables?
Yeah, so, I was gonna talk to you after, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and I think B and Ts are maybe bringing a vehicle, and they're going to have a booth, and so I think, and then Ray Trump's buses.
Oh, yeah, Ray said he would block all the streets off we need, so.
Yeah, so, we've got, I think we've got it pretty well covered.
Thanks, Lungee, great job.
Yeah, thank you, Jane.
It's the old fifties.
Anyone else, citizens input? I'm seeing you waving out there. Go ahead, state your name, please.
My name is Kelly Young, and I live at one five three four Seville, Michigan Road.
Okay.
And we're here.
Do you want us to go ahead and read this first?
That would be great, because basically everything that I'm-
Or clearer, I should say. My wife says I mumble, so I'll let hers speak.
I'll try. Dear Argus Town Council members, the neighbors in closest proximity of the Joe Gady and Megan Asseff residence at one five three one oh Michigan Road are writing to voice concerns about activities at this property. The new residents are organic farmers who have a flock of chickens between twenty and thirty that are free range. Some of the chickens venture onto our three properties daily. Mr. Gady and Ms. Asseff have allowed the chickens to roam without seeking permission from us in advance. The chickens have bothered areas with newly seeded grass, a newly seeded wildflower field, and a small garden area. Even after voicing concern to the owners, the chickens continue to roam and have to be chased away daily. Mr. Gady and Ms. Asseff have also placed three beehives in close proximity to a children's play area, which is a safety issue for this neighbor. These beehives could easily have been placed at the end of the property away from our outdoor living space. Mr. Gady and Ms. Asseff have parked a blue Dodge Caravan next to the outbuilding. It has not been moved since they began living at this residence in the early part of two thousand and nineteen. It appears to be used as a storage facility, as neighbors have witnessed them unloading supplies from it on numerous occasions. We fully understand that we live in an agriculture area and that there are permitted uses. However, our agricultural area is unique in that there are homes in close proximity to each other, much like some of the homes in Argus. We are concerned about the other plans that Mr. Gady and Ms. Asseff have for their area and what issues will arise with it. Does he plan on having other livestock? Is there a limit to the number of animals that he can have for his lot size? What is the minimum acreage to be considered a farm? It is our sincere hope that you will be able to assist us with our concerns. Your thank you for your help in this matter sincerely. And it's Kelly Young.
Mm-hmm.
John.
Savoy.
Savoy. Pam Davis. Those are the three signatures.
And Mark.
And Mark.
And Mark.
S D is, he wanted, he didn't get a sign. He couldn't say he wants the sign.
He was MIA, who knew what he was.
The signature isn't here, but we're, yeah.
He'll vouch for it.
And it marked him, so. His concerns.
Yes, sir.
Well, in addition to what Kelly said, I also had a note to contact the Marshall County Sheriff's Office yesterday and have a deputy come out to speak to him about the situation. I was, we were told that if these chickens are creating damage, which they have, that, you know, further legal action could be pursued against them. But we need, we just did a lot of unanswered questions, and maybe you could provide us with some citizen input here.
Well, Chuck, you wanna step in on that at all?
I'm sure you're aware of this.
Yeah, what does it say?
I haven't seen it yet, so I haven't looked it up, but I did notice it's happening today.
Who is this?
I don't know the people's names.
They just moved in the first of the year. It's about, what, half a mile north?
It's three houses, three homes over from Mrs. Demick's to the north.
Or three houses south of Co. Alliance.
Yeah.
Right next to Mark Dean.
First house south of you, Mark?
It's where Mark Snyder lived. Remember where Mark Snyder lived?
No.
Oh, well.
I didn't know him.
It's the first house south.
It's under my, after my Davis's.
So, has any documentation been taken on the images? Have you guys pushed further with the law at all?
Well, I had the initial contact with him yesterday, was her first phone call.
But have you documented anything so far?
Pictures and-
We do have pictures.
You have pictures and proof that this is happening?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, that's step one, right? I mean, the remedy, obviously, is to, I mean, I don't know, to get him in here possibly, if you don't want to pursue court actions, that way we can try and settle it in-house, I guess. But I guess that's your personal preference, being the property owner.
What's the regulations? I mean, what can he do with his chickens and what, how can we protect our property?
We, I mean, we definitely have to look that up, because off the top of my head, I can't grab two of the ordinances to remember.
Let me, let me kind of weigh in here, okay, if I can. From the sounds of it, you're outside the town limits, is that correct? Okay.
But we're just in the two miles zone.
But we're in the two miles zone.
Right, so, what that, what that means is that town ordinances would not necessarily apply. So, let's say, for example, there was a town ordinance that says, no chickens permitted in the town. If there was an ordinance like that, then the town could enforce that and say, all right, Mr. Gady and Mrs. Asseff, you can't have these chickens in the town. But they're outside of the boundaries of the town, they're not within the town, okay? The only other thing that the town has as an enforcement tool or a way to regulate some kind of an activity like this is this land use and development code, which is what we would kind of think of as our zoning ordinance, okay? Now, in that, I'm not sure, and Chuck, if Chuck knew of something, I'm sure he'd have already piped up, but I don't know of anything in there that's gonna cover a situation where you've got chickens running at large, you got beehives, and, and I don't know, it sounds like a, a storage vehicle, is that a fair thing to describe it or way to describe it?
Yeah, and it appears to be like a non-functioning vehicle. I mean, we've not seen it.
Does it have license plates on it?
We don't know, because he has it parked so close to the building that we can't see it.
And I'm not going to trespass.
At the end of the day, not to take up, you know, points, getting into a dissertation about this, but if the land use development code provides any kind of a relief to any of these activities, then that could be an enforcement mechanism. But if it's zoned correctly, and if they have chickens, they have bees, if those are permitted uses for their zoning classification, they might be okay. Now, that doesn't mean that they can just have chickens getting on your property and causing damages. That's an issue, but it may be something that you have to take up on your own, okay? There are things called nuisance statutes, all right? That, that may come into play here, and other things that may occur, such as if chickens are coming over and they're eating petunias. I don't know what chickens eat, but they come over and eat the petunias.
They love bugs, I can tell you that.
Okay? But if they cause some kind of damage, then there could be a claim for compensation because of the damage that their chickens caused. But in terms of what involved, if the town can have, I think the town's gonna be limited to whatever may or may not be contained in that land use development code, okay?
But is there a minimum amount of acreage to be quote-unquote called a farm?
Well, the, the whole label farm isn't really gonna rule the day here one way or the other. It's really gonna be, what is the zoning classification, what's a permitted use in that zoning classification? In other words, what can they do on their property as it is zoned now? In other words, if, if they wanted to have ten pigs in the backyard, maybe they could do that if it's zoned agricultural, okay? And maybe that's, you know, smelly, nasty, who knows? But maybe they could well do that because it's zoned correctly. But again, the issue that you're describing is, is basically something about if there are chickens that are basically on your property, that's a separate issue than just what they're doing, it's basically then that's causing harm or, or damage to your property.
If the chickens are on your property, do you have the right to harvest them?
I, I'm not sure if I'm gonna be the one to give you permission to do that.
Yes.
Thanks, Mark.
The land use book is also online at townofargus.com, and it is searchable. So, if you have like a search word like chickens, you know, you can search it there.
Well, the questions in regards like acreage and all that, would that also be in that?
Yes.
Okay, and then it's called the land use?
And development code.
Yeah.
Has this ever been issued in the past?
Well, first time for everything.
I think it's-
Right, and that's, that's why we're a little concerned you might not find exactly what you're looking for, because this might be a first time scenario.
Right, you know, again, judging by the age of the homes and as you drive through the area, they've been, I know it's zoned ag, but it appears to be quite tranquil residential area.
Sure, there's gotta be limitations, yeah. But that's what I was trying to say earlier, is being outside the town boundaries, like, there were horses up there forty years ago.
Oh, I know that. They were on our property.
They were beef cattle, right?
But there was also, it was also fenced in. I don't think the horses were jumping the fence.
Horse never came over to my house.
You're proud of that.
So, as of right now, I guess our hands are tied until we do all of this, do a little more research. Unless Chuck found something right there, real quick.
I can let you know what can be taking place out there. And all of you are in the ag district, that's what your zoning is.
Correct.
Okay? Permitted uses, grazing, pasture land, livestock, agricultural crop production, crop processing, product storage, seed fertilizer sales, farm implements, small wind towers. You have single-family, you can have childcare, manufactured home, home occupation. You can also have a nature preserve, recreational trails. Those are all permitted uses.
What about fencing is?
I, I can tell you what my grandfather said, good fences make good neighbors.
Okay, now, with that being said, if said neighbor puts up a fence, within being a farm, are there any special, does he have to have it surveyed, because he's quote-unquote a farm? Versus?
Not, not as far as, as zoning goes, but as far as where your property line is or where his property line is, a fence is made to be set on the property line.
Correct.
He didn't have a setback on that fence?
You don't have to have a setback, no, it goes right on the property line. So, you're, you're looking at having to know where your property line is. Have you had your surveyed, or did they have their survey?
The party ain't questioning here, this is talked about putting up a fence. So, I guess our question is, you know, should he be doing the survey, since he wants it up? Should he be the guy that's getting the survey?
Something to, to the township trustee about is, I believe that it's still the law that as you look at the property line, you're responsible for the cost of the installation of a fence to the right half of the property line. Your neighbor is responsible for the cost to the other side. So, that's something if they're-
Because I don't want it.
Pardon?
If I don't want it?
Sorry, you're in luck.
If he, if he chooses to graze the whole property, you have to put up half the fence.
Oh, I bet.
I, I ran into this, I have some property out on Junior Road, and the neighbors has a hayfield behind me, and he put up the fence, and I had to pay half of it because, for, and I, same thing, I went and looked, and there was nothing I could do about it. I didn't want the fence either, but, you know, that's the way the law states it.
That doesn't, that's fine.
I don't see right that there is-
Well, I guess there's always precedent for everything.
That's, that's a different issue for us there, so.
Yeah, that law's been in effect for a long time.
Hundred years. So, what, I, I guess, pardon my stupidity, but why should we pay for him to maintain, basically run his farm? That, that doesn't-
Sir, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you volunteered to do that.
Oh, no, we're not.
If it's something that you wanted to have put up or installed?
No, no, he wants it up, not us.
Then knock himself out, that's fine.
Okay, but if you think he's on your property, then you can bring that into question.
But it goes back to my original question, do we still have to pay for this right-hand side, or if he puts it up, he puts it up?
If he puts it up and doesn't say anything, I would let him do it. Yeah, just let, don't say nothing. I found that out the hard way. If he puts it up, then it's gonna go back.
I think he's gonna have to have a survey first, before he can do anything. Right now, he's going off my survey, counting out the feet. So, now he's over around her thirty feet.
Okay, but your survey isn't correct?
No, mine is, but he's going off my post to go to try to find it to the other side.
With a tape measure.
That's what a surveyor does.
Yeah, but that, you have to pay to have that done, I would think.
And he's not, this gentleman's not a surveyor, by any-
Okay, but I can go onto G I S, or I can go onto my deed and see that I have, my property is eight hundred and twelve feet from my other property line. He knows where the property line is, I can go eight hundred and twelve feet from his property line, and that's my other side.
And that's legal?
And that's legal to do.
Shoot the chickens.
Okay, but that being said, I'm sorry that we can't give you any clear answers in, but what we're at, the two being the two mile zone, so. He said, he just read what's in that box. I'm interested in this now, but I don't, I'm not caring, if there's anything that the town can get into to do it, but.
So, what should be our follow-up plan, I guess? I mean, I want to sit there and format you about these stupid chickens, but.
Collect that and, and follow up with a lawful order of some kind. That's exactly what I'd do as a property owner.
So, I just keep calling the, the marshal, sheriff's deputy, friend, mate?
Possibly get a hold of the lawyer, or something of those means. That way, some kind of, you know, you have your proper processes set in place before just jumping boat, you know, doing something out of anger, you know? Collect, it, it, I don't know, I, I would, I would go to a lawyer and get some actual legal advice first.
And take all the pictures you can take when there's chickens on your property, whatever, take pictures of it. That, that's in your back pocket, then. It's his responsibility to keep his livestock and animals on his property.
Dogs love chickens.
At the end of the day, it is his responsibility now. You'll have to go through a legal-
They do?
Get that, but.
Okay, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming in. Anyone else got any citizens input? If not, we'll move on to old business. Thank you. Attorney report.
Oh, a couple things. Guys, I just want to let you know that the next, I'm sorry, it's not the next meeting, but it's the first meeting in July, July the third. I will not be here, I don't think anybody from my office is gonna be able to cover that either. Very good?
Over here.
The other thing I just want to let you know about, we have another ordinance case that's kind of into works, and that, if you recall, that's basically what allows Corey to collect that law enforcement pot, if you will. So, we've got that on the file. The next thing is kind of, it looks like it's under the attorney report, is that electric ordinance, two thousand and nineteen dash seven, if you want to get into that, if you have any other questions about anything before that. This, this is something that, if you want the particulars in regards to the capped Exhibit A, you're gonna have to get that from Jamie. But as I understand, it's basically a new classification to the electric rate schedule. As I understand, there's not even anybody that falls into this category as of yet, but it's something that's kind of a thinking ahead, if you will. But it does create a new rate classification.
I can, I can add a little bit to that, Derek.
Yep.
We have a large power ordinance right now. This is a large power, high load factor, just drops the kilowatt price if somebody comes in and uses a, a bold load of kilowatts. Just another, just another tool we have to offer a different rate, that's what this is.
So, that, that's it in the nutshell.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, well, that being said, ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash seven, permitting that scheduled rates charges to create a new rate classification. You want to pass this? Motion to pass it on all three readings, motion to pass it on one reading. Suspend the rules and pass it on all three readings, ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash seven.
Second.
Motion to second to suspend the rules and pass the ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash seven on all three readings. All in favor, signal five, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Same sign. Motion carried. Accept the attorney report, that's all you have. Motion to accept the attorney report.
I'll make a motion to accept the attorney's report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Same sign. Motion carried. Chuck Dewitt?
Yes, sir.
You're up again.
Just wanted to give you a couple of updates. The trailer's out on thirty-one, we're working on those. Derek and I spoke a couple times this week. I have been emailing back and forth with Mr. Asif Akbar, best I can say it. And he said that, I told him my patience was running, well, actually, I didn't say that. He said, when are they leaving Argus, question mark, question mark? You've given us many stories, exclamation point. My patience, bold, underlined, is completely gone, when, when, when? Question mark, question marks, question mark. He wrote back to me saying, I'm doing everything humanly possible and making progress. I'm negotiating with movers, and we'll know in a few days when they can, when they can schedule. It's eight hundred miles run, and these big loads are not allowed on highways all the time. So, one unit will take three to four days to be able to be transported to Delaware. I cannot transport on weekends. There are four units, so it all depends upon availability of trucks. And I'm asking for as many trucks as I can get. However, I have no control over that, I'll keep it posted. So, we do have correspondents, we think they're moving, and try and get that out of here. So, just so everybody's aware of that. The other thing that I wanted to let council know, and George and Suzanne were at the meetings last night. We had a V Z A meeting, and then it was followed by a planning commission meeting. And I want to tell all of you and everybody here that you now have a working V Z A and a working planning commission. They are up to speed on what they are doing, understand what the process is and what, and how they're trying to accomplish it. Everything's not perfect, we still are, you know, kind of new. We're not like Culver, where we have many cases every month. But it's kind of like, you know, we, we get them here and, and we train. So, it's been a little over a year, and I think we're right now in a place where we're comfortable and they're doing a good job. Rob Kerford did excellent job last night, running the V Z A and bringing that to conclusion. And Lindsey Shively- And Lindsey Shively was outstanding. I thought she just was phenomenal in what she did, how she handled what we had before us. So both boards are working and doing a very good job.
I'll second that. I was at the meeting and basically to make sure things get followed according to where they need to develop the codes, they did. I mean, and it was just, honestly, I didn't have to do much. They are working things, I think Chuck's given them kind of a handout, kind of a manual, if you will, but they walked through the statutory requirements, they followed the stuff in the code, it was handled the way it needs to be handled.
And I think that's all I have unless you have questions. Well, I guess I do have one more comment. And I think that the time has come and we need to be looking into the near future as to how we want to regulate rented properties. Right now, we have some people in rental properties, not only in Argus, Plymouth, La Pas, Culver, everywhere, that are in pretty deplorable conditions. We do not have an ordinance that addresses rental properties and the upkeep. We were, Christine and I were in one today. Landlord shut the water off because he didn't want them in there, so he shut the water off. Water's been out for weeks. People living in a place without water and they have kids. And that's not unusual throughout our county. So I'm just gonna bring this up, I'll bring it up to everybody that I see and meet, but I think if we could have some type of rental ordinance that had minimum standards, you know, that had minimum standards. Eric, some of these landlords are not supplying anything.
Are you talking about like Warsaw and then they have like a commission that goes around and inspects rentals?
I don't know what I'm recommending, other than the fact that I want to get people out of these conditions. And I think they're suppressed by landlords and I don't think that's really what we want as community. So I just really would like you to kind of start thinking about it, you know, and of course, we would have to look at, okay, now we have, we put together minimum standards, how do we police this? Okay? I understand and it costs money, you know, when, I don't want to go to the council and say, hey, give us a bunch of money so we can, you know, take care of these landlords. But on the other hand, somehow we need to raise this up and make it better for the people that are the most disadvantaged. So be thinking about it, we'll talk about it, maybe we'll get some type of study together, have a work session.
Chuck, do you have any thoughts on steps or thoughts on what something like this requirements, basic requirements should look like or would you be willing to give some thought to that and report back to us?
Yeah, I will. I would like to see it as for all jurisdictions to have the same type of code, the same type of ordinance. That way, we're not looking at something in La Paz that's different than we do in Argus or Bourbon or Green. So I would like to get everybody on board to put together this ordinance and then adopt it for their own jurisdictions. And then when we go into these places, we have the same thing to look at.
It's absolutely appalling that they turn water off and there's children in the house.
I have a question back on the trailers. From what you read, there are many exceptions or possibilities for this being drug out over a period of time? Have we given them a timeframe? Can we give them a timeframe? What kind of teeth can we put into it? What can we do to make sure this happens?
What do you want to do with the owner who lives in Delaware out of our jurisdiction? What can we do? The best thing that we can do is keep pushing, I believe, from behind and keep getting them in the right direction. By the time you put together a lawsuit or something else that's gonna be taking up time and town resources, I don't think that's the way to go.
So he's calling shots basically on this?
I don't think so. I think you're totally wrong in that. No, I know that you are. So, you know, we are working on this. Until I brought this up and made an issue out of it, nobody cared. We pass it every day. I brought this up, so please let me see it to the end.
Well, I want to thank you for the help you've given us on the VZA and the Plan Commission because you guide us well through, appreciate those books you gave us and we are thankful that you are doing these ordinance forces, forces. Because we wouldn't be able to do it without you, I was put that, we wouldn't get it done. Is that all you have there, Chuck?
That's it. I said too much, thank you.
Business application. Everybody guys, go in front of him. We've looked through all this for about two and a half months now, which has finally got down to the actual application, it's been redone to complete the requirements as far as what the application says. Does look very nice. Does everybody have a chance to look at the application? And your thoughts, though?
I personally don't have any problems with it. I think that they're an asset to the town and I think the work that they're doing up there is very nice from what I can see from the outside. They have been in the community for a long time and I think they would like to stay in the community for a long time. Those are my thoughts, so I really don't have any opposition to this myself.
We had said we would research each application. What research has been done on this that was in our program?
You said personally?
We just said in our business program, it said each application would be researched. And I'm asking, has there been any research done? Are we following our own rules, basically?
Well, I mean, I don't.
Explain to me which research. Their past? They've got everything listed here, we know they've been here for years.
I understand, my mind doesn't want to do the good old voice system, I understand that. I understand that. But to be more specific on certain criteria of research, I mean, besides what we're asking for in the application, yes, we're supposed to come together and we mentioned about talking about it before just voting into it. Into being accepted, but beyond specific research, I don't know what else we would need but what the application's provided.
So as far as specific, my specific research, I intentionally stopped just to look in there to see the work that they've been doing. Again, you know, that was all I knew to do as far as research goes, just to see if they're making the actual effort to do what they're saying that they want to do and I believe that they all.
Like you, Sean, I looked at, but I also went and asked questions. I want to know why this hood had to be this way. I want to know how they had to run everything. I asked a lot of questions about, you know, there's a lot of cost to putting this thing in. And then I found out, I talked to electrician and he was telling me about the hood, about the sprinkler systems and how everything had to be done and because they, his company has put some of these in. And I realized they, there was a lot of rules and regulations and standards they had to meet. The only thing Suzanne, I just, I'm asking this because I just, maybe my mind needs some more information, but are you kind of against this because we're giving so much money to one person or are you against the Berkets? I mean, I don't know.
I'm not against the Berkets. I am against, I feel like this has been pushed on us. And when I look at this application, it's not complete.
What's missing?
If you look at the application that's online and the one we've been given, the company's three-year financial projection attached, this application does not have that line. That line is missing on completed application. And on the application that we had that was completed March 22nd, the program was passed May 15th. They had not completed that line on that application. Now, in the current application, that line doesn't exist, but yet on the one online, it does. So it appears it's been left off of this.
Did they get this application here in the town building?
No, it was one I gave them, so you can fault me. I've got so many of these and it must have been one that I had either before or not the right one. I don't have an opinion one way or the other. My job is to put the program together for you. But sitting back here, I understand what you're saying and I see that, but moving forward, I guess I look how, we can talk about this for the next six months, but we're either gonna have to sometime make a decision and do something.
I want to follow our own rules. If we have an application, then let's follow it. We're making exceptions because we know this person.
I don't see that as making an exception. I mean, Suzanne, you may know everybody that goes up there and you, that won't make a, I mean, that should make your difference. That's how you should vote, you should vote with your gut. So as I, I guess moving forward, I say this, if you're not for it and the others want it, then do it. If they're all against it, then don't do it.
Anytime you vote emotionally, you're often making a mistake. I want to vote with my head. I'm gonna think this thing through.
Well, I've said upstairs, you vote with your gut, so at least I did. Maybe I did it wrong, but I did pretty good task up there, so. I don't know. There's the application that I have, we can put this off another two weeks and I don't think that's gonna help them, so.
And.
The worst thing I'd see is somebody to close their mouth.
They're asking for 10,000. They've already gotten 5,000 from ACDC because they knew they couldn't get the 10,000 immediately. We hadn't asked it last time, so they went and got a loan. So now they're coming back and asking for 10 again.
And I also just spoke to him yesterday and his cost had went up probably another 15,000 because he's got a.
That's the cost of business.
Okay.
He's finding alternative sources of income as well.
For some, yeah, but we're trying to assist these places as much as we can.
Private invest in investment in this town, we have to do something accordingly.
This is a cap, a max cap, 10,000. Doesn't say you gotta give 10,000, you can give 2, you can give 5, it doesn't say you have to give.
Because there's people that make well over $100,000 or have sat in their millions for decades and they won't open up their checkbook for anyone, but they expect tax dollars to cover their expenses. And right now, that's the kind of situation that we're in right now. We have to use tax dollars to invest in our private business system, there's not enough private investments. I'm not gonna let one little typo mess this up. Now, I would like to come back maybe next week or something, a workshop.
You haven't sat through a budget workshop yet, Dylan.
Fine, but fair enough, something needs to be done for these people, they need the money and we're gonna hold them accountable due to a typo or something? I mean, I don't, I don't find that moral.
I don't find it a typo. I find it a purpose, purpose omission because they hadn't filled it out the first time. They weren't gonna fill it out, so it was omitted on this one. That's, right or wrong, that's how I feel, that's my gut on this application. And I'd be wrong.
The patient, the projected budget would be different if it was on the other application?
Well, we ask for a detailed business plan. We have six lines of a narrative for a detailed business plan. Is that a detailed business plan? I don't consider that. I mean, I almost feel like they're putting down, they're taking by ten minutes, filling out this application, we're gonna hand them $10,000. It's just too easy, just because we know them. I feel like they should put some effort into, this is town money, this, if you want to hand them 10,000, we can, fine. This is tax dollars that we have a fiduciary duty to handle responsibly and I don't feel good about it. That's my feeling, with my head and my gut.
Okay, everybody, I fell into this about three years ago and I brought up a small incentive program that we gave out $3,500 apiece to downtown businesses and so all that was pretty much the same thing. Hey, we want to paint our sign, we want to do our windows and put on the application and they got $3,500. It did make it look better downtown, I'm not gonna say it didn't. People even admitted that it did, people in the council said it was better, people in the town living here said it looked better. And we did it then and we set up a different one and then Mark's put the time into this and we're working through all these little quirks and things, but it's time to start moving, that's my opinion. So what do you guys want to do? Do you want to accept this application? Do you want to put it off some more? Take this and ask it is, because everyone, it's on a case-to-case basis. Tell me what you want to do, make a motion to or not to, and how much you want to give them or not give them.
So we, is this a two motion, is this a two motion thing, the one to accept the application and once that's voted on, then I'm going to go back for how much to give them or do it all in one motion?
It would be one that you're gonna, you're gonna, in one motion, because this application has $10,000 cap written on it. So if you want to give them $2,000, you tell, you make the motion to give them $2,000, it either passes or doesn't. If you want to give them five, it passes or doesn't. It's up to you guys.
No, no, I make a motion to accept the application and give them the 10,000, you're asking.
I'll second it.
There's a motion to second. Any other discussion on this?
I'm in a voice, I'm in a voice that I don't agree with the full 10,000. But that's, that's my, that's my opinion.
Okay, all in favor of passing this with the full 10,000, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. If you want to give them a different amount, that's up to you, we just decided not to give them the 10,000.
I'd like to make a motion if we approve the application and give them $7,000.
There's a motion, is there a second to take this grant application and give them $7,000?
I'll second that.
There's a second. Any other discussion?
We have to be aware of which fund this is coming out of because there will be other money that's coming out of that fund. So if we want to take in other applications.
There's one, $3,000.
That's right. So this could impinge on other possibilities for the rest of the year because we did not budget for this program.
So that being said, all in favor of giving them $7,000, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three, two.
I think we need to get a correct application, whatever it is, I think that needs to be online because we just accepted one, we've set a precedent. To me, that's dangerous. This line is either included or not included, but we need to be clear on what we're passing. I have an issue with that.
Okay, next. We have an application here for the Plan Commission, Mr. Mark Harchbarger. To whom may concern, I am hereby submitting this letter to express my interest in serving as a member of the town Argus Plan Commission. As an independent candidate, I have been a longtime member of the Argus community and I feel I would be a valuable member to this group as I have a great interest in the continued growth and prosperity of the town. With that being said, it's my appointment to put Mark Harchbarger on the Plan Commission as the council president. Well, go ahead, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a mowing lane on 301 North Michigan Street. Everybody, the old Baptist church, old tabernacle, whatever you want it is, that the town has against it. In order for it to... The process of it being sold, go through, we need to lease that lane, and we need this signature, so... Is there a motion to accept the mowing lanes in the amount of $930 to be waived on that property?
I'll make a motion to waive the lanes on the property at 301 North Michigan Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion carried. Anybody else got any other old business? Now, we'll move on to new business. Sarah, would you like to speak? For all everybody that doesn't know this young lady, would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, my name's Sarah McCollum. I am the EMS director here at Argus. I had an impromptu meeting with the chief, fire chief of Plymouth Fire Department and the EMS director of Plymouth. And we are understaffed as far as EMTs, and our coverage is pretty handled at night, but during the day is questionable as far as if we have an EMT available. They currently would come down and cover for us during the day if we did not have an EMT available. And due to their short staff as well, we were... I was informed today that they would no longer be able to do that. So we need to discuss some further options as far as bringing in EMTs to Argus. I did a five-year plan just for you guys to look at for budgeting, but I also passed out a paper today, and that would be a proposed budget for 14 EMTs, which would be all part-time, two EMTs per shift. And that would be in the event of cardiac arrest or anything. Everyone is on the same page as far as what's expected of them, because currently we have volunteer drivers, and they're just CPR certified, but they don't know how to use the equipment, nor are they certified to. In that case, we would be able to do the coverage for 24 hours, two per shift, and it would be a 124-hour shift per week for the two EMT groups. And it would... Currently, we're budgeted at $54,400 for... And that, you'll see on that paperwork, it includes the EMT salary, the shift pay, the driver's salary, and shift pay. The proposed would be those two EMTs, and that would be $174,720. It is a big jump, but I don't know what any kind of flashbacks would be as far as if we don't respond to a call, but it's our obligation to provide that service. And if we can't get volunteers, the whole country's struggling. But, you know, maybe this is offering a part-time job position would be a better option than volunteers that we can't find. But I did make some notes down at the bottom of that where we might be able to cut some here and there. Our one ambulance is paid off, and currently we're budgeted $10,000 a year for Argus Two, but that will be paid off, I believe, in two years. So that would be an extra $10,000 budgeted back into our budget. Again, we'd be cutting that EMT salary, the EMT shift pay, the driver's shift pay, and the driver's salary, because it would be two EMTs. I mean, there are other outlets we could try. That was just my proposed... Just in the last few calls that I've been on, it'd be really beneficial for the patient care to have two EMTs. I mean, we're not looking at ALS currently, because we do still have Culver is an ALS. We have Lutheran down in Rochester that would come up and do assists. Plymouth said they would do an assist like usual if they had the manpower, which, again, volunteering all across the country is a struggle at the moment. So I'm not gonna lie, I don't know really what I'm proposing, but that's something that I needed to bring to your attention. And also, they did tell me today that it was... Currently, our agreement with Plymouth is that they collect half of what we do for the run that they assist on. But they propose that next year, or maybe the following, depending on their budget, it would be a $300 flat fee for Plymouth to assist us. That could exceed what we even collect for the run. So that would hinder us in the long run. They did 15 runs for us last year. So if we budgeted for 20, that right there would be an additional $6,000 budgeted just for ALS assists from Plymouth. And I know you guys are really big on industrial, like, and just bringing more people to Argus. If we can't provide 911 services reliably, I'm worried that some people are gonna be like, whoa, you know? So that's kind of something to really think about as far as EMS there. I know I'm just the bearer of great news.
No, we need to... It needs to be done. Something needs to be done.
But on the other hand, hopefully by the end of the year, I'll be able to show you that I am recouping more costs from charts that we are submitting. And we're all up to date on that for the year. We're also looking for... We're doing our first fundraiser at the TGIF. Even if it's just a bake sale, it's something, more than nothing. Hopefully, just getting out there. We have a couple more people interested in joining the EMS team. Currently, it's drivers, but they have shown interest in going to EMT school. I was also thinking of doing things like standbys. Lisa and I have been talking about Acumen and what we are allowed to charge for and things like that, for hopefully a little bit more revenue here and there. So, I mean, I'm trying not to just be like, hey, we need more money, but hey, let's figure out where we can cut more costs and showing you that we are bringing more back for our services, so...
Great job, Sarah. Gives us a tool to work with when we do the budget, and we've got something to look at and see. Thank you.
Numbers are always better to see than imagine, so...
Exactly.
Aside of the numbers, I think we have more things to consider here as well as we go down the road. I agree with Sarah 100%. If we're gonna grow the town and try to grow industry, we have to have some kind of reliable EMS service to write to those people. They're gonna demand that, number one. We've gotta figure this out one way or another. Somehow, some way, we've gotta come up with an answer to this EMS situation.
Sarah, how much does an ALS or a paramedic make per hour? I'm just asking.
I would say a minimum of 15 an hour. That's for ALS. We are BLS.
Right.
So if... Me in a private service, when I worked private... A private service, I was making 11 to 12 an hour, but that's private service, and that's right around average, so...
Just like they said, your teachers and your emergency personnel, the ones that pay the least, and the ones that have the most.
Right? Let's go play football.
It's the truth.
The truth.
All right, Sarah. Any more ideas on that? Now, we do have this for budget, so...
I don't have any more ideas. I mean, I have like standby ideas as far as maybe for clubs and things, we could do $50 standby here and there, or something to bring in a little bit here and there. I was also going to talk to Mark, surprise Mark, doing like a joint fundraiser, maybe like a pancake breakfast, because neither one of us have the manpower to do it ourselves. Maybe if we do it jointly, we could get something done. And, you know, the community realizes that, hey, let's help our fire department and EMS out. We could totally use hands.
Let's just do all of them jointly.
There we go. Split it.
It's easier. It's a lot easier. All right, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Move on to Resolution 2019-6. A resolution of the Argus Town Council authorizing investment in public funds. That's pretty self-reliant, though.
We have to renew... We used to renew it every two years. They have to put regulations on it. Certain municipalities have to renew it every year now.
So is our motion to accept Resolution 2019-6.
I'll make the motion to... Go ahead, Suzanne.
All right, Sean made the motion, Suzanne seconded it, and we're moving on. Resolution 2019-6, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next is Resolution for Locking Commercial Dumpsters.
By the way, we never got one put on ours. Church, they haven't put a bomb...
They're working on it. This is just kind of for your review tonight. I would not like to just jump in and pass it. We have some issues that we still have to work out, like, you know, how many are we gonna put on the northwest side of town? You know, we have an alley behind there, so we're still working on, with Lake City Bank, to try and see if we can put them in their parking lot on the side. Jamie and them had laid a pad for dumpsters. We were thinking about maybe if we had to, we could put four dumpsters back or whatever we can do. We're working on that, but we can't just jump in and do a locking lid dumpster resolution. Maybe not tonight, but it was something to think about. I had Derek draft it so that if we... If it came down to that, when we do get it all figured out, it has... The locking dumpsters, I think, so far has reduced some of the out-of-town dumping that I... We had seen in the past. But they're not locked right now. They can, you know, if you wanna put a padlock on it, and the business owner, of course, would not have to be there when it's dumped. It self-unlocks when they dump it. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention and maybe come up with something for the future.
All right, thank you. I have one new thing on the new business. Parkside Church is asking to close the street between the church and the park again this year on August 11th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for the annual carnival. The electric cook up again, that'd be August 11th. So if that one asks for permission? Excuse me? 4:00 p.m.
Do you need a resolution?
I just need a motion to accept the place. Somebody wanna make that motion, or are we gonna not close the street?
I don't know. I'll just think about it. Yeah, I'll make a motion till 11:00. The street can be closed for the carnival for Parkside Church, second of August, whatever the date is.
11:00.
11:00.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any others before we go to claims?
I've got a couple things, and these are, like, kind of like Lisa's, things to think about. This was brought up to me by someone else. Perhaps as a town or a council, we send a letter to all of the people on the boards, commissions, just emphasizing when they agree to be on a board or a commission, that there is some responsibility to that, and we would appreciate their attendance. And if they're not going to participate, to please resign, so we can replace them. And we struggle often, getting quorum at many of these. So that was... Someone brought that suggestion up, that perhaps we consider doing that. I don't know if we wanna do it or not, but another thing that was being discussed, and I know we've discussed this before. Get all materials to Lisa on Friday before the meeting. Get everything to her, so she's not putting things, adding it at the last minute. That's being disrespectful to her. And when things are just handed to us at the beginning of the meeting, different things, we don't have time to read it and look over it. That's not good for us, because we're not... We can't do a good job.
I'm sorry, I had my meeting today. I couldn't get it to you.
Washington!
Yep, totally me, 100%, I guarantee it.
Didn't wait any time to fall on your sword.
Two very good points.
I'll take that.
And I'm as guilty as the next person on getting things to her by Friday, because I'll forget about it, and Monday morning, I'll go, oh, crap, there's a meeting Wednesday.
It's just getting to the point where I get it all on, you know, the day of the meeting or whatever, and then I'm passing them out.
It's strange that I've kept looking for two days for the stuff to come in the email, and it usually always happens by Monday night, and I'm like, where's the stuff? And I finally got it this morning. Squeezed it in my lunch hour later, looking over it.
All right, is that it, Suzanne? And us two? You got...
There's not a lot, I guess, to be said about this. A couple weeks ago, there was a county meeting of MCEDC, everybody from the community. George couldn't attend.
I did make it. I did make it. Oh, I'm sorry, draw meeting. Okay, there was two meetings. There you go.
I made the one I'm sorry. You made one, I made one. So this was talking about everything that MCEDC has done around the county, and it was significant. Sometimes we don't realize how much they are doing. And one of the points of the meeting, they can get more funding, because right now Jerry spends a lot of time out raising funds. So there was no definite answer, but just an awareness that he wouldn't spend as much time working on getting funding for them, because they do not have a large budget to work with. Sometimes we think they do, they don't. They do not have a large budget to work with. But if they could put more of their efforts into developing projects within the county, we're already growing very well. We have a lot of things going on, but it would be even better. And I guess I've learned through the last few months, Jerry is working hard, and he is working hard for Argus. So don't underestimate what he's doing for our community. We may not always seem, but he is. So that was from that meeting, and basically, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have something unrelated from that. The town contributes to the Humane Society every year a sizable amount of money. It was brought to my attention this week, a resident went to the Humane Society and asked to use a live trap of theirs, and was denied, saying that they don't get it back. This resident also offered to put a deposit down to use one of their live traps, and was still denied. I think, you know, if a town resident makes the effort to drive up there and, you know, offers to give them a deposit even to use a live trap, it's the money that the town donates to the Humane Society. I don't know. To me, I just think that's wrong, and I think something should be said about it.
Why don't you write a letter of concern?
I will. That's what the board chose. I just think it's, you know...
I've written a few letters. Go for it.
I mean, I just think that...
We tried that. We're giving the money, so, you know, them trap, they couldn't buy them traps if they didn't get the money.
Well, that's kind of where my thoughts come from.
We had... We have traps here.
Yes, I borrowed from the town.
Police department.
We have the same thing.
We finally bought our own.
This resident was trying to catch a raccoon that was getting into a can.
There's a very large trap and a small trap upstairs over there. Well, tell that resident, come over to my house, he can borrow mine.
Well, just the point, the Humane Society.
Right, you're right. It's a point they should...
I just catch him the trap. I think it ought to be unified from the town.
Let's move to claims.
I died.
Okay. Claims, Lisa.
The total docket is $401,765.99. Top five claims are as follows. Number one is Imba at $134,371.78. Number two is payroll number 11 at $36,484.12. Number three is payroll number 10 at $36,023.64. Claim number four is strider sales at $22,712.64. Number five is Herman gets at $17,535.47. Top five claims total $247,127.65 and represent 61% of the total docket. That's enough, George?
Yeah, great. Yeah, great.
I move to approve claims five sixty-five to six fifty-two.
Seven. Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. We have a workshop immediately after. Let's go to the restroom. Jeremy. Looking for the jury. Is there a second? Second? All in favor? Aye. I will vote.